I'm so happy today to have Dean Salazar. Did I say it right?
Yes.
Thanks for coming. You're one of the many city council candidates I've had, and I just appreciate your time for for coming today.
Of course. Thank you. Yeah. So we're live.
Yeah, well, sort of. Yeah. I mean, this will come out later, but but yeah, we're recording. Everything's going.
Excellent.
Yeah. And yeah, I just wanted to say really quick. Yeah, obviously. Thanks for your time. If anyone else wants to come on and is running for city council, you're always welcome. Just reach out to me. There's a lot of candidates, right?
Seventy.
Is that right? Okay.
Over seventy.
Wow.
I talked to Lou Frederick before this entire entire thing began, and he's and he said, join the club over like a hundred people were thinking of running. So Christ.
Yeah, it's a lot. Yeah, it is a lot. Yeah. So tell me a little bit about District One and yourself and like why you got into this.
Yeah. So District One is the most unique district. I think that makes sense for me being elected because I'll be the most unique candidate. So District One is the most diverse in Portland, but it's also the most moderate. So that means that we aren't anti-police. We do, of course, a police reform, but Loretta Smith was elected seventy to thirty there over John Hardisty, and then running Gonzalez was as well. In addition, it voted against Metro One Ten. So you have all these candidates like Candace Avalos, Timor Ender, Steph Ralph, who I believe are pro One Ten. I am not. I don't remember my position at the time because, to be frank, in 2020, it wasn't that big of an issue for me. I did vote yes on Measure One Eleven disappointed with how that turned out, but Metro One Ten was a different beast altogether. And and I was disappointed to see its effects, frankly. I've I've always been ambivalent on the drug issue until recently, to be perfectly honest. So because I've seen the issues. So my focus is really reducing systemic racism and systemic issues on the war on drugs rather than eliminating them altogether. And in fact, actually want to say that something important that I feel like not enough people get. The fact that since America has had a semically horrible past, as have many countries, but America uniquely chattel slavery, which has caused lack of economic opportunity when combined with segregation and lynchings, is that any policy that requires an amount of force will always disproportionately harm disproportionately harm minorities. But that's not an excuse to not have policies that require force at all, else we're just going to have anarchy. I think that's just not an acceptable alternative. So we have to understand those issues, but also be willing to work around them and solve them. We need to get into details there. And so going back though to District One. So our district has been historically under invested in and underrepresented. We've we were promised allegedly like equally equally effective transit, equally effective investments as downtown when we were integrated. Instead, no, they've treated us like a piggy bank. And I know what it's like to be underrepresented and under invested in. I have I, as I've been open in my campaign, I'm openly autistic, and I was diagnosed when I was a young child. In addition to that, my family has quite an interesting history because I know I am Latino, but I was in the foster care system, as was my mother, actually, for both three different reasons. My mother got a violent partner when we moved here to Portland when I was eleven. And so I moved initially went to Robert Grade Middle School, which recently their principal or superintendent was just outed because he did not do anything regarding a lot of racism in the school. So and due to my experience, I'm guessing there was significant ableism as well. But but anyway, and then my mother had to go into a foster home because her Latino mother could not take care of her for some reason. So I don't have the full details on that that family story. And then my grandfather was half pueblo, and my great grandparents immigrated here from Mexico. They were Jesuits. I don't know what. I think they were in the southwest or central Mexico. I don't have the full details. And we used to think that they were undocumented immigrants. So that shaped my perspective growing up. Then it turns out about around a decade ago, we found their documents, which honestly, I'm a little bit disappointed there because that shaped that was such a huge part of me growing up that it gave me a real wide perspective, understanding that politics is personal, like no, nobody is not affected by politics, whether it's economics, whether it's, you know, immigration, et cetera, et cetera. And then my father, who my who my mother met in Louisiana, was half Jewish and half German from Kentucky. He died in Afghanistan. My mother has encouraged me good at genetically tested. So like, I'm pretty sure she wouldn't be dumb enough to lie if it could be disproven. And so there's that. So I grew up actually wanting always to be in public service because my not only was my father a soldier, but just frankly, the books I read emphasized serving others, protecting the weak and all that. And in addition to that, I was always very interested in academics and stuff like reading about history and mythology. I had so many of those books when I was younger, in addition to fantasy books. And I also have I also read a lot. I also learned a lot about the Holocaust, and that really solidified my strong stance against all sort of evil. And then being Gen Z as well, since I'm twenty-three and the second youngest candidate, I also grew up influenced by modern media. I would say particularly Avatar Last Airbender, which really gave me a perspective regarding balance. Now, I don't mean balance in regard to centrism. I think that centrism is a false balance. I think that I think that because the political compass was created sort of arbitrarily, and the entire left, right political spectrum is based on nineteenth century France. So like, that's not really effective way anymore. At this point, we're just using left and right as vague designations to attack each other when there are several ideologies that don't really correlate with each other there. So that's why I don't like the left, the right, or the center as political concepts at the current moment. Though I do identify as a progressive because identify with progressive Republicans, identify with the old progressive Democrats as well, and Roosevelt and some liberal Democrats, though on a case by case basis. And so going back though, so we so I was born in Salt Lake City, Utah. My first memories from San Diego, California. We moved back to Lake City, Utah. We lived actually with our God family for a few years. My mother got a degree in journalism in college, but she had still worked in minimum wage jobs, like the most prominent one I remember was seven eleven consistently. So then, of course, we moved here to East Portland, which you we've already gone over that story. So and then what got me involved was not just my historical background and all that, but I also had a choice when I was nineteen. Either I could go to college and which I go to college kids for the most part. Or I could go into trades. I was not inclined either way. I mean, I'm inclined academically, but not in the trades wise. And here's the thing, since my mother had gone to college and we have so many people who go to college and lack so much socioeconomic mobility and so much opportunity even for graduates of college and particularly the disabled community, we see that college isn't working for everybody. And so I was reminded of the example of Abraham Lincoln. He was self taught. He was autodidactic. And so I wanted to sort of push how far I could really go and how much change I could do being sort of the same way, having a healthy and balanced media diet. I think I've done quite well by saying planning on going to college. I'm enrolling this fall, but I'm probably going to be really starting next next year. So as soon as I'm sworn in, so I'm gonna be very, very busy.
And where is that? Where is that? Where are you gonna enroll?
Just PCC. So yeah. And then my plan after that is go to law school and study constitutional law in particular. So.
Cool. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's really cool. Yeah. There's a lot in there. I was I was gonna say, there's a lot of people, maybe your generation or or older, but they love Avatar. And I always think of the other Avatar, the blue, like James Cameron.
So do I. I actually thought the blue Avatar was an adaptation of The Last Airbender for the longest time.
But I've never I've never seen that one. And people tell me that that the Last Airbender is like an excellent excellent.
Well, yeah, it is.
IP or whatever it is.
Eastern philosophy and tradition has had a huge influence on me as well. In fact, I think we could use some of that. I think, in fact, a lot of it is compatible with Christianity to surprise to a surprising degree. Not younger Christianity, not progressive Christianity. I'm not either of those things. I'm a traditional Christian. I currently identify as a Baptist. That's a closest analogy. But yeah, I think that that really will help actually America if we sort of adapt to that. In fact, that's why I'm such a big proponent multiculturalism. When we have a wide variety of viewpoints and perspectives, especially in regards to traditions, philosophy, we'll be able to pick the best and be able to really learn and grow and improve. And I think embracing that, and particularly when it comes to small business world, will really energize East Portland in particular. Because we are the most diverse district, and if we invest in job training and jobs and a small business office, we'll be able to really have a lot going on there. And when we combine that with building local production centers like I want to do and local manufacturing centers to invest in blue collar jobs that typically union unionize, we'll be able to give people alternative pathways to good incomes and to be able to afford living in Portland, all without raising taxes, all without all without more welfare and all without all without having people to, you know, having to go to college, and it will just give a lot of people more opportunities. So that means job training and workforce development programs, including for the homeless. Because I think we need to detox. I think we need a detox center, sobering center. And then we also need to get them clean and then get them job training and employment. So I'm a big supporter of shelter first and housing first has flaws, I believe. I know it's worked in my home state of Utah, and I know it's worked in Finland. But those are entirely different states with entirely different infrastructures. So that's a problem. That's a problem here. We're basing it on the efficiencies and the structures that they use, not in Portland. That's a problem. So we need to be adopting, I believe, a housing first as a as like an alternative, but not the main strategy. So.
Yeah, I had this this your this episode probably come out after this, but we talked with Keith Wilson, the Merrill account. He is very into what you're just saying of shelter first and then housing first, which I agree with because housing takes a long time to develop. And we don't have time to do that. But but I was gonna just tell people if if they don't know the kind of the geographic area of District One.
Oh, yeah. So District One is east of eighty-second. For the most part, that's a boundary basically east of two oh five, the two oh five highway system. And so I've lived East Mall two oh five for the past twelve years, actually. So I know the district, at the very least, the district North Division quite well. So.
It's a long time. Yeah.
Yeah, I currently live in the Hazelwood area, but I used to live in Mill Park. So I was so I'd be able to theoretically watch David Douglas, from which I graduated there through Ward Leadership, actually. But yeah, the district is very under invested in. The infrastructure here feels more like a Rust Belt town than Portland sometimes. And as someone who really empathizes with those Midwesterners, I I feel like real passion to really invest our in our district because we deserve better. Everyone deserves better, you know? We need more jobs. That's why I actually the one one that one of the few things I like about the Trump administration is that they actually did tariffs. And now, like, I don't approve of his ten percent tariffs. I think that's economic suicide, but some of his tariffs were beneficial. Though some of them were also also contribute to inflation. So it's really a mixed bag there. And I think we really invest in blue collar jobs because, as I have said, college should not be the where we're funneling people. We built this on the back of labor, whether it was slave labor or union labor. Unfortunately, in the former case, we still built it on hard work and hard labor. We have so much natural resources. So the idea that we're going to just be a service economy all of a sudden, or like be just completely like the college economy of the world, I think that's an economic fantasy, especially when you look at our geography. And when you look at the fact that the Ottoman Empire, for example, who was a debtor nation for several decades, for several centuries, and a service economy, that's when they went into decline, actually. And we've seen patterns of this before. So I think that we should not repeat that mistake. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it's interesting. You brought up earlier the I was just talking about this with a representative about how Tom McCall was a progressive Republican and like you mentioned Theodore Roosevelt. And I think obviously, the Republicans today are different, a little bit different from that for the most part, but like, it's just interesting that that used to be even like a thing.
Charles McNary and Wendell Wilkie and George Romney are three of my favorite Republicans of the twentieth century, alongside Benjamin Wade, and of course, Old Abe.
Yeah, of course. Yeah. It's just interesting because you seem you seem to really know your history about a lot of this stuff, which is kind of rare nowadays, but.
Yeah. And it's really unfortunate that we have a lot of people who don't. I think that's that's caused you to a lack of education. And we've really gutted civics since Reagan, and that's part of the problem. I think that Reagan, if Reagan had the plan to make America more conservative or like following his ideology, I think that backfired, frankly. I'm I'm partially glad it did because I think his economics doesn't really work. But but not exactly all for like taxing and spending in every instance. We need to be smart about how we spend our money. Roosevelt was smart with the money. There was some inefficiency, and Wilkie rightfully pointed that out. But even but one thing you won't hear after that is that by nineteen forty-four during near the end of the war, right before Wendell Wilkie died, and then FDR died the next year, you thought you'll hear that he actually was planning to go further than Roosevelt after seeing and touring a lot of places. And remember, Wendell Wilkie is sort of the beginning of the yeah, the sort of beginning of the Republicans based in the plains states, which I would consider the core of one half of the conservatism that built the modern Republican Party. So.
Interesting. Yeah. I was gonna mention too, like, maybe this is like this in in your district because I'm in a different district than you, but but people are always like, when people come to the show, it's just really interesting because like, I live in a neighborhood, there's literally no sidewalks anywhere. And I also live on an unpaved road, and I lived here for six, it's like seven years now. But I think people that live in like Lads Edition or like these nicer neighborhoods come out here, and they just can't even believe it because it's like, yeah, maybe your neighbor is the same way, but it's like, it's been like this forever. And like, we just don't have the same infrastructure that some other neighborhoods have.
I mean, my neighborhood doesn't have me on my street doesn't have a sidewalk. So that's that's really unsafe for people. And we need to be building sidewalks. So though that does get me regarding infrastructure, actually, because one thing that you might not often hear is that so much of our spending right now is actually hold up in these infrastructure projects that we've invested in to improve that are now like we're just paying basically debt on it. So we're paying it over time. So that's why so few services. And in addition to the amount of inefficiency and waste, and frankly, I'm convinced that since we're spending seven billion dollars, we don't feel like a seven billion dollar city. I don't like Christopher Olsen, but that line everyone's been taking from him, even fellow moderates. So.
I don't I've never I've never even heard it, but I mean, that's seven billion dollars. A lot of money, and you don't see you don't see that.
And we don't see the results. And we don't see the results of Oregon either. So that's a whole nother can of worms. So. But we don't see the results, and that's frankly unacceptable. We need more accountability. We need to in fact, the very fact that like elected officials can't really pull up a database of what every dollar is going to. They have they just get the budgets every year that have like broad categories. That's completely unacceptable. Like, what sort of this isn't nineteenth century, guys. We need to embrace technology. So we need to upgrade those computer systems if that's the issue. And then we need to be able to do that because I think that will result in a lot more cost efficiency and time and will hopefully allow us to reduce spending a little bit while still keeping a lot of services that we need. So.
Yeah, absolutely. Let me get into this. So your policing position, I just thought was interesting because you put pro social justice and pro police in the sense that we need more police.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah. So I do know that the roots of a modern police do come from the slave patrol. But every country in history has had a law enforcement that uses weaponry to an extent. Britain is the exception, but I think Britain right now is struggling actually as well. So I don't want to really model after Britain. Besides, they banned guns, for example, and now they're scared of knives. So that's not really a good place to model ourselves after. But and it's been a sad fact that historically, in every country in the world, minorities have been disproportionately harmed. This isn't just true in America, though I would argue it's exacerbated due to the legacy of segregation, redlining, lack of economic opportunity, and of course, slavery. But it's also been true in places like China, as well as in Japan, which is basically a police state. I like Japan, but I'm being honest about that. But you know, and other countries like Rome.
China China is a police state as well, wouldn't you?
Well, oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I wouldn't like I mean, I thought that was obvious. Yeah, China is actually more fascist than communist at this point, frankly. Economically, their structure follows more Mussolini. They're just using a red face. So. And anyway, though, go and it also, I believe, might have been true for medieval Europe. And so the alternative to that that we're hearing, well, there's really two alternatives, and neither of them I think are good. Either it's using the military for law enforcement, which I think is just a whole another can of worms. And then that's what the medieval people did, and then old empires. And then the alternative is using neighborhood associations for that. But that has its own problems. Like, the idea that you're just going to replace police with a community based system, it's fantasy, not people. People don't have that sort of time. And also, I just don't think it's a worthy alternative. So I believe in investing in police. I believe in accountability. I believe in police reform. But I don't believe in defunding them. I don't believe in abolishing them. And I think that we also need to be looking at more community policing. We need to be expanding the amount of police to fifteen hundred officers. And we need to be also fighting political violence, whether that's left or right. So I've been a consistent advocate against political violence, like, I mean, when I was young, I might have been a little more soft than Antifa. But by the time I was even twenty, the riots were concerning. I support the peaceful protesters and all that. But we shouldn't be having political violence on either side. I've heard finger pointing. I've heard like, you know, people blaming Antifa, people blaming the Proud Boys. At this point, I don't give a crap. Okay, we just need to stop the political violence and no matter its source. So that's why I am very much in favor of public safety, and I also believe we need more patrols near the gateway area. We need it also near Division and near Mall two oh five as well, I think. Those are three critical arteries of our district, and it also so happens, I used to live near each near all three. So we need those, especially because businesses are being broken into and robbed. And we need to really invest as well into getting the homeless into shelter. And in fact, that brings us to homelessness, if you don't mind me bringing that up. And yeah, and the current voluntary system isn't working, and here's why. So when you work on the Organ化Commission, like I do, both as a self advocate and the Social Services Co-chair, you find the people that some people with healthcare issues, mental health, emotional health, don't always have the capacity to make those decisions. And so I think the folk, so so I think the progressive, the idea of saying that, no, it all has to be voluntary. I think that's rooted in a deeps. I think it is rooted in empathy, but I also think it's rooted in a naivety regarding how mental health works. Frankly, it's also rooted in some sort of libertarian ideal, I feel, and anarchist ideal. And I don't think either of those are good. I've been, I mean, I despise both anarchism and libertarianism. So.
Interesting. Yeah.
Like I know totalitarian or totalitarian totalitarianism too, because you know, you need balance and all that. But the idea that you're going to have everybody voluntary voluntarily do everything, that's fantasy. That's we have, we created societies in order and structure for reason. We need to use it. So that's why I'm very much in support of that. And I also believe that we need to ensure that people there are getting drug free. I've, as I've said, I'm not pro drug. I'm pro the people who are on drugs who need to get, you know, detoxed and housed. I certainly don't hate them. I care about them. I've talked with them because some of them actually have been on my street from time to time before they got swept. So. But they but they need help, and sometimes we need a carrot and stick approach. So we need to be blunt about that. So.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Well, and both those things are interesting because I think it's where, again, like your knowledge of history helps and that like any any sort of society, you obviously need law and order. And I think and I think there's a lot of people out there who honestly don't believe that, like even candidates who don't believe that, that they think we can just exist and.
They they think that I know that some I know their arguments about harm reduction, about, you know, you safely and then, you know, and and frankly, I get it. But is it worth the cost, really? You know, we have to remember that we have to prioritize the society. We can't do everything at once. If you try to do that, we'll bait. I mean, you'll basically tax one hundred percent if we still won't have enough resources. So there is a simplified society that we can't do everything. So we have to look at what sort of society do we want to become? What sort of society do we want to be? What's what do we want to do? And so I don't think the harm reduction, like giving people like tin foil and free needles is necessarily helpful. Maybe in very, very limited circumstances, but again, I don't think that for the vast majority of those cases, it's really necessary. And we also need to be getting them off the streets as well into designated camping areas are spacious, welcoming, environmentally conducive to their mental health as well, because I think the large reason that some of them aren't going there is because they're cramped. And as well as you also have, you also have to get recommendations in some cases as well. And frankly, nobody knows what their problem is. I've heard some people pointing fingers, but I'm not currently convinced that that's a root of the issue. So some city bureaus and stuff like that. And then you have these nonprofits and shelters that are reliant on waiting lists, waitlist to get funding.
Yeah.
And that's that's completely unacceptable, and it showcases the flaws in the metrics we're using.
I don't know if you're, do you know Jesse Burke? You know her?
Oh, yeah, I met Jesse a few times. So yeah, I like her.
She's been on here, but she does. She has this whole thing about how like the actual path to get somebody into shelter, and it's just this crazy long, like they need a phone, they need email. Like you said, there's wait lists and.
And frankly, it it's not good for people who are homeless. And let's be honest, actually, here. So a lot of a lot of them are also shipped here from other cities and states. And it reminds me of how I imagine the political gamesmanship with the immigrant crisis. And that's just completely horrible. So we can't move that slow. Sometimes we have to streamline things and make it so that we can go quick. I'm all about action. I'm not someone who likes talking. Like, I know I serve on commissions where we can't exactly do action, but that's why I'm running for Portland City Council. I've seen the issues. I've studied them, and I wanted to do action. In fact, even on the commissions, for example, the Organ化Commission, one thing I want to do is housing developer tax credit for autism inclusive housing. I think, yeah, that we actually had our chair go to a meeting developers. They were really happy to work with us on this, but they just didn't know what to do. So that's one thing we need to help incentivize.
Yeah.
And I do support more public housing to a limited degree, especially I think that it might be a way to get people who work in the city government to work downtown again, to get them in person. If we raise their wages and then have them in public housing, that might be a way to get them to basically be willing to work down there. I think that would be a fair trade off because you have to do give and take in order to get people to be willing to, you know, do that. So.
Yeah, that's an interesting idea.
Yeah. Hybrid is sort of like how we do hybrid Zoom meetings. It would be like a hybrid system for people who work like clearly their critical staff there that need to be at City Hall that aren't. There are others that aren't that don't need to be there. But we also need to streamline and create like a central directory of communication for them so we can reach them because so much is siloed. It's insane. Part of it is a bureau system, but also part of it is what I call city court politics. It's where functions a lot like royal court. Everyone is focused on their own stuff. And if you ever watched GGP Gray's Rule Rules for Rulers, we're seeing that in the bureaucracy. And I've seen this also in other bureaucracies too, particularly China. Do we want to emulate China? And I'm not just talking about the dynastic China, but modern China and even modern Japan is that same issue. So we shouldn't allow us to be ruled by bureaucrats. And those bureaucrats themselves are having issues. So I want to really look at holding them accountable. We need to hold everyone accountable. But that also means investing in people as well, because we can't just like be all punished. We need to use a carrot and stick. As I, as I said, balance is a key to everything, not false balance, not going right down the middle, but finding the right solution and the right methods for both, because I've always rejected false choices and false narratives. Instead of and in fact, my mother actually told me that she was influential behind me on this. I'm not really sure, since I don't remember my childhood that much. But she instead of like going down the middle, she says that, and this does really reflect my approach. So to like, take, take parts from from both ideas and combine them to a new idea, which is the crux of my philosophy and my ideology, actually, because I'm a Christian progressive, a classical conservative Christian. Just because I believe that that has the correct interpretations based on the evidence, and I'm an evidentialist and textualist as as well as like, as I said, I identify as a progressive, but I'm also a pragmatic, a pragmatic person. I really focus on what can we get done? Because you have to remember the FDR himself had to work with businesses to get a New Deal passed. As soon as as soon as businesses revolted, guess what? No more New Deal programs. So that really harmed him in the end. And then we also need to ensure that we are doing everything quickly. So we need to be action oriented. And then I also populist tendencies. Now, I don't, I wouldn't go into full populism because then you get into rule the mob, but also like you sort of hamstring yourself in governing. And also sometimes if you want to be pragmatic, you end up having to backtrack that. And I think that this that dishonesty really harms a lot of politicians. But I do have those tendencies. I let those tendencies guide me alongside other methods as well and other other thoughts. And I'm also have also been consistently a maverick in the American Democratic Party. Like, for example, just last month, I was the key siding vote against a TikTok resolution, actually, of all things. So the reason here was that Brian Yensvold, a friend of mine, who I deeply disagree with here, believe that like people having access to TikTok is a human right and stuff like that. And like, it's free speech. And let me be blunt, social media, any company is not free speech. Like, I supported Trump's Twitter ban. I think that like that when you mix up freedom to be on a company's thing with free speech, I think that creates a whole lot of issues and creates corporate cronyism and also blends government and business together in a way that that is just not healthy. uh, that is just not healthy. So, uh, that.
This was a county.
A party resolution. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, they passed it in my absence when I was a Lensey Perdability Association forum, uh, plugged there, watched it on YouTube. Uh, but, uh, I stood against that last time and I, I supported specific amendments for that. For example, uh, I was worried about the idea that like the idea that like corporates, like corporations have the right to have an app I, as well to be in America. Uh, or for people to have access to an app. I think that's, it opens whole kind of worms. I don't support the TikTok ban, but the whole resolution was in my mind poorly written and needed a whole, uh, reform and amendment. I suggested such, such things to Brian, my friend, but, uh, he disagreed and thought that we didn't, uh, that he didn't need to do it to pass it this time. And I guess he was right. So.
Yeah. But I'm just amazed that they're spending time on that at the county level, but.
Uh, it's not too much time to be frank. It passed very, yeah, not too much time, but, uh, and then we, and then I've also been a maverick and when it comes to foreign policy resolutions. In fact, uh, Jack Hannah, the former Pennsylvania Democratic Party Chair who's endorsed me, uh, he was their interim chair when their former chair resigned. Uh, he's lived in Portland for, he lived in Portland for a few years before moving back. So he was in the Maltese at the time. And, uh, so they were doing a resolution on Syria, uh, back then, twenty nineteen, when I first joined. And, uh, I had to point out that Assad is harming so many people. And so I was the, I was a lonely voice there, but as a new PCP and as someone who was nineteen, I made an impression there and that actually got me in Jack Hannah speaking. So it was actually my foreign policy instincts from reading about foreign policy such as Kissinger's book. I don't like, I don't like Kissinger. Uh, I don't hate the guy as others do, but I do have criticism of him as well as, uh, another guy's book who is now taking a pro Russia side, which I don't know why they, why both of them, you know, Kissinger also was slightly pro Russia. I don't get why both, uh, books that, both people who wrote those books that influenced me took for Russia side because that sort of contradicted their own diplomatic arguments. But anyway, the second was Mearsheimer, uh, the architect of offensive realism. And I support offensive realism, the human rights. Uh, anyway, but, uh, and so, yeah. And then we also had one with Venezuela as well, where I did the same thing. And now look, they're playing or at the very least thinking of invading Guyana. So congrats, congratulations. We've fallen into this trap of America bad so much or like, uh, America first so much that it's actively harming, uh, other places in the world. And if you think that that won't cause immigrate more immigrant, more immigrants who want to come here, then you're wrong. It will also create more anger and more harm. Uh, so like the bush, uh, so I know that like, uh, we've not always been methodical in our interventionism, but there's no way to go, there's no reason to go the complete opposite direction either. And I think this is going to actually be an economic issue in the future, especially as climate change hits, we're going to have a huge immigration crisis. I've been a supported, I've been, I've been a strong supporter of immigration and immigrants. Uh, I helped ensure that the county, uh, parties platform on that in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty was the most progressive in even more progressive than Canada's. But we also need to be ensuring that they don't need to immigrate here because there is an obvious, uh, obvious flaw that like, yeah, we can build lots of new jobs, but if you have so many people coming in, uh, without like official documentation or like official screenings, stuff like that, that's going to cause at the very least logistical and bureaucratic issues. So, uh, I think it's more of that issue than a criminal issue. I would support like civil courts. So, but the frank, the fact of the matter is I support immigration. Uh, I support like letting in large amounts of immigrants, but we need to be measured with how we do that as well. We need to like ensure that we have a good system as well. And we don't currently. So we need immigration reform. And, uh, also, uh, is a big thing because in my district, we have a lot of immigrants. So, uh, in District One, we have a lot of, um, like there's, actually I live with Ethiopians actually. So, uh, and actually the particularly the black African community has really invested in the foster care system lately, uh, as businesses. And it's, I think a lot of is wonderful. Uh, it's really great. Uh, and, uh, though of course there are a lot of abuse in the foster care system. In fact, one in five in the foster care system, uh, have experienced some form of abuse and that's unacceptable.
Yeah. I heard a stat, uh, from a guy, uh, he runs the anti-war Oregon organization from Eugene, but he told me this was like months ago and I never heard this, that I think it was also a similar one in five or one in four end up homeless.
Yeah. And, uh, in fact, uh, that actually that, I'm glad you mentioned that because I just remembered a stat. Uh, so thirty to forty percent of the national homeless population, uh, Oregon doesn't track this as much, which I think is frankly, we have a bureaucracy. If we're going to have a bureaucracy, just use it for Christ's sake. But anyway, uh, sorry for taking the Lord's name in vain, but anyway. Uh, but, uh, thirty to forty percent of the national homeless rate has some form of I D D. So we're throwing, and then we, when you combine it with the foster care system issues, uh, where we're throwing people, uh, out on the streets after a few years, uh, when they're adults, that's causing and contributing to the homelessness crisis. Uh, so we're actively making it worse in Oregon. It's completely insane. And don't get me started on the issues with stabilization and crisis units, because that's the same issue with the voluntary stuff. Uh, especially for people who are lower functioning, uh, so to speak. Uh, though the entire concept of lower function, high function is controversial in autistic community, I'm just using it in a specific context here. So like people who aren't able to make decisions for themselves on this. So, and that's, these are real issues that most people don't even realize is contributing to the homelessness problem.
Yeah, you're, I think you're right about that. So.
Um.
Let, let me ask you real quick about, um, just the new city council in general. You'd mentioned you wanted one change.
Yeah.
That you'd like to see, right? Or at least one change.
Hmm.
And, and also just working with the new, you know, candidates. Have you like talked to any of them and kind of formed alliances?
Yeah. So regarding the change, I would have supported Merrill veto. And the reason here is that every, and most other executive branches have a veto. So it just makes practical sense to have a Merrill veto. Uh, I know it can be abused, but that's why we have the city council to override that veto. I also, uh, would have written an impeachment process into it. In fact, I'm going to see if I can do that by legislation or if it has to be a charter changed next cycle, uh, next charter cycle. Uh, I think that those would be the two big things on accountability that I really want. And accountability is a big part of my platform. And in regards to alliances, uh, we haven't formed any official ones yet, but we're talking. Uh, there are several candidates who are quite particularly like both progressives and moderates and even a couple of people who would consider conservative or closet conservative. Uh, like I'm good friends with Daniel DeMello. We, uh, we are quite good friends actually. And then Terrence Hayes as well. Me and him are decent friends. Uh, Laura D. Smith, uh, I've talked to frequently. I like her if she runs. Uh, and then also I like Jamie Dunphy. He's, uh, he is unfortunately, uh, not taking police, uh, money because they think it'll corrupt them. Uh, I've always been of the Teddy Roosevelt mindset of take the money, but don't let it corrupt you. Always be a maverick and always, you know, always stand up for your beliefs. Uh, and then I also do like, so that's District One. So in District Two, the people I like are Brooklyn Sherman. I've already talked about with you about how he was misrepresented the Lamont Week article because he's been deeply involved for his whole life, just like Daniel. Uh, he, he's like, he's lived alongside many, uh, Portland political, uh, people. Uh, and even though, uh, some of them tend to be more progressive, uh, like Rayford, uh, and, uh, Iona Ron. He is very pragmatic and he understands his stuff. In fact, currently he's a bus driver. Uh, so he actually really knows transportation issues quite well. And me and him have similar issues regarding, uh, work progress and administration. Uh, what I want to bring to Portland. I want to do in a public, private partnership. And then as soon as voters are seeing that, uh, we are doing it well with that and they believe that we will have accountability. Then we can have like a ballot measure or a vote to roll it into city government. But first I want to showcase it can work. Because we're currently being overtaxed with very little, um, done in that. So as I said, we don't feel like seven billion dollar city. So before we have any new programs, I want to do it through public, private partnerships to showcase a proof of concept and for it to be effective first. He wants to do it, uh, at the public level, which will require a tax increase, but he might be willing to adopt my public, private partnership, uh, concept ideal for that. So, uh, regardless, I'm thinking he's great on that. And he also is very articulate regarding policy. I spoke with him many times. He understands how government works. He worked on campaigns before. And he also is part of the, uh, local business association. So they misrepresented him as a dog walker on the Lamont Week article, but no, he runs a, he is family runs a walking towards business in Portland and are part of a business, uh, business association and, uh, have been very active in the community. So, uh, he's the youngest race, uh, candidate in the race, twenty one. I'm twenty three. So and then of course Daniel is twenty six. So, uh, and then also other candidates I like, there's quite a few uh, in District Two and District Three, Mike Marshall, I like, uh, he's part of Oregon Recovers and I believe he wasn't, uh, in favor of one ten either. So he knows, uh, the issues there and all I also there like do, 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 uh, James Armstrong, uh, who I've met and Debbie Kitchen, I think, uh, is a good person. Uh, frankly, the, the idea of a green business progressive Portland has sort of been the norm. So I think Debbie will really add a, a great perspective there. And then also, uh, in District Three, uh, Daniel DeMello, as I've said, and then, uh, uh, I've heard rumors of Aaron Crum, uh, who is, uh, I think would be a good, uh, pragmatic person there. And then District Four, uh, you have the widest range. I like Eric Zimmerman. I like Moses Ross. Uh, there, I've worked with Moses Ross for years in Democratic Party. He's a very good guy. He knows I'm a maverick, uh, and I've been able to still remain reasonably popular there. So. Uh, and then, uh, Eli Arnold, uh, he sounds like a good person who will bring a good policeman's perspective there. I think that's very important. Oh. In District Three, I forgot Jesse Cornet, great guy. Uh, he's definitely more progressive, but he's someone who I, who I think is work, who I think will be able to work with. And I'm mixed on Angelita. I don't hate her by, but I definitely see issues regarding ability to collaborate. But anyway, back to District Four. And then I also, uh, see Bob Weinstein. I've met him. He seems like a decent guy. Um, my first conversation with him was actually kind of funny because, uh, I, I, I like ghost read it sometimes. Yeah. So, and then pers, and then one person there said something they thought was a funny descriptor and a funny endorsement. Because they said that like, yeah, I know him. I've met him. Gives off big, get off my lawn energy. Uh, but as one to twelve, I think he'll be fine. So that was the funniest back candidate endorsement I had, I'd ever seen.
Is he, is he on Reddit? I don't even get.
I know, no, he's not on there. It's just one of the people talking on like a candidate, uh, thing there. So I found that really, I found that humorous. I actually told him to lean into that for, I don't know, the memes, you might be able to get some good memes, but, uh, he doesn't seem into it. Oh, well, no worries. I like Bob. I think he'll be great. Uh, and then I also like, uh, I've met Sarah Silky. She's decent. Uh, I think we need a balance of people who, uh, support police and who are police, support police accountability, as long as those same people are willing to collaborate and compromise.
Yeah.
That's a critical issue here.
They can't be, uh, stonewalling each other.
Exactly, exactly. That's, uh, and that's also why if we have, uh, a hung, uh, parliament, which means that neither really get a majority. Uh, and I'm, I know I'm boiling everyone to one of two factions here, but that's for the, just just for simplicity, then I would probably, uh, be, uh, very likely to run for speaker, uh, that or president of the new city council, because we need someone who's affable and able to work with them. I've been called affable by many people, uh, on all sides. And I think that I could bring them together. I don't think the president of the city council necessarily needs to be the biggest policy wonk. They just need to be someone who people can trust. And as an autistic person, I cannot tell a lie. Obviously that's, uh, not like literal, but in general, unless I'm like stealing one of your cookies. Uh, I tend to be very honest and I think that that is exactly what we need. But I'm also someone who also knows how to be diplomatic and build coalitions. Like as, like despite being a maverick in Democratic Party, I've done that successfully historically and I'm someone who knows how to work with anyone. I'm, I've had a diverse experience growing up. So I think that really will equips me for this. In addition to that, uh, my study of history has actually helped me appreciate a lot more. So.
Yeah.
I miss the old Rockefeller Republicans and that. So, which are now Clintonite or moderate Democrats in some cases. So.
That's what's funny is it's like, it's shifted so much that it's not people have shifted. It's like the, the measure of how to measure people's politics is kind of, they, they call it the Overton window.
Yeah. The Rockefeller Republicans actually became Reagan Republicans in the eighties. Um, after they voted for John B. Anderson or Carter. And that is the most interesting thing. So, uh, I would say that, uh, we have spiritual Democrats and spiritual Republicans. Uh, I, because now I think that the, the old Democrat Republican thing is more of a vibe than two, than two parties, because we're more like two coalitions.
Yeah.
The ancestral Republicans, um, I'm not ancestral, but the spirit of the old Republican party, I consider to be pro-business, moderate, reasonable, pragmatic. A little more moderate than I would like, but I'm still willing to work with them and still think that they provide a good perspective. Uh, and I think that a lot of, uh, Portlanders might actually be that, because especially when you look at election results historically, uh, we've tended to be more Republican until, uh, the party switch, which was caused by a mixture of things. From segregation, uh, yes, you know, desegregation, uh, but also, uh, you have to remember in the twenties are shifting as well. So there's been a long historical shift there as so that we need to also figure out because it started nineteen teens and we'd figure out what caused that because it's dividing our country. And I really think we need a new unity and hope. Trumpism doesn't provide that. And, uh, neither does, I believe, the current, uh, progressivism. Uh, it's based, like it has good intentions, but it's not what we need. So I, so, so I support my own ideology there. So, uh, but I'm not like an ideologue by it in any metric as well. That's not what I'd be focusing on in city council.
That's good. Yeah. Um, I was curious too. Have you heard there's a, uh, I think it's like beyond a rumor at this point that Bud Clark's daughter might run.
Yeah. Um.
There's a lot of other people.
I think Rachel, uh, would be great, uh, on there. I think she'd be a good one. And, uh, I, I think that Sharon, if she were to run, uh, would be good as well. If, if you look at Rose City Reform, that's a good place for this sort of stuff. Yeah. And, uh, and I think that they were, they'd both be great. I endorsed J V P in twenty twenty two because frankly, we didn't know how bad it would be back then. Uh, I voted for Hardesty in twenty twenty two. I'll admit that, but that's because Gonzalez was pitched as like this MAGA Republican. So.
He still is, honestly. You know, a lot of people call him that.
He is, uh, and I will say that I will be blunt and say that I think he is conservative. Uh, but I don't think that he's, he reminds me more of McCain. Uh, honestly, so reminds me of McCain. Uh, I think that's fine. Uh, I, he's, I'm not being, going to be endorsing in the Merrill race because frankly, uh, endorsing is not just worth it in my opinion. I want to work with whoever gets elected. Uh, and, uh, but, uh, he's not the, the dangerous person everyone makes out, makes him out to be.
Yeah.
I disagree with them on plenty of things, mind you, but that said.
Yeah. There's a lot of just like that demonization, I think that goes both ways in Portland for some reason. People call people MAGA or people call people fascist and then on the other side, people call commies and all this stuff. And it's just like.
You know, here's the thing about, here's the thing that when I scroll on Twitter, I hate people calling Democrats communists because communism requires uh, abolition of private property, it requires abolition of all currency. It requires, uh, a lot of things that even the most progressive progressives, unless they're actual communists, which, which exists, but they're very rare. So I've, I've, I've not, not met a whole lot. Uh, but like the idea that Democrats are communist or Marxistist, uh, or that like cultural Marxism thing? No. Um, I've, I like, I'm no communist. In fact, I'm anti-communist, but in order to understand ideology, I, I read about Marxism and there's nothing regarding, uh, LGBT stuff or anything that anyone is worried about. So, uh, all of you out there, just relax on that. All right.
Well, I'm just pointing, uh, I was just trying to point out that.
Oh yeah, I know, I know. I'm just.
That kind of populism goes both ways now because especially in Portland, people call Renee or anybody like MAGA and right wing and all this stuff. And it's just a dog.
Yeah. And by a lot of people's, a lot of those people's same standards, Biden would be a Republican and that's the frustrating part.
Yeah.
Uh, Biden would be, Biden would be conservative and Biden's no conservative, uh, at least anymore. He's undergone a, a unique transformation over the decades.
Yeah.
Uh, and I like Biden, uh, though I, though I am concerned about inflation and stuff like that. So, yeah. Uh, and frankly, uh, I think a lot of people are also, uh, doing that because, uh, I think they just feel angry. Like we have such a huge mental health problem, this, uh, country that people are turning to more and more radical ideologies. So in fact, it's a common, it's, it's a unofficially known fact that many autistic people, uh, even if you don't turn to specific extreme ideologies are always extreme in their viewpoints. Uh, not always, but like they, they tend to gravitate towards the far left or these really, uh, ideologies that are not centrist. Or even if they are centrist, they sort of double down on it in a, so in a sort of odd way.
Okay. Yeah.
So that's something, uh, so it's supposed to mental health issue, but I also think it's a greater visibility of autism issue because we look at things differently. And so, uh, I think we are also seeing, uh, the traditional political system and political spectrum break down because uh, the democratization of ideology is becoming a thing. So we're having people even be like, I've seen weird things about MAGA communism. Which is completely insane, but that showcases that we're in like a new, uh, political, I wouldn't say realignment, but I would say new political philosophy age. And that's exciting many ways, but it's also very damaging. And, uh, we need to be balanced in how we approach that. And in Portland, uh, we've seen it manifest as, uh, partisan, not, not even partisan in a factional conflict. And I think that's not healthy. Uh, I've always been an advocate that we need factions to work together and balance. So I'm big on bipartisanship and compromise, even as someone who identifies as progressive.
Totally. Yeah. There's a lot of partisanship and ide- ideology silos, I would call them.
Yeah. Like if it was Lieberman versus McCain in two thousand eight, I probably would have voted for McCain, honestly. Like, I don't hate.
I'm surprised you even remember Lieberman. That's going back. Yeah.
Yeah. I study, I've studied like a lot of the prominent historical politicians. So I like Romney, but Obama was just too good for me. So. I like Romney, but Obama was just too good for me, so I had to I had to like Obama more. And Clinton two thousand eight, by the way, I think would have been better than Trump, sorry, than Clinton two thousand sixteen, interesting.
Okay, yeah.
Anyway, that's getting worry off topic.
No, it's all good. Um uh before I get into like these end questions, tell me about the Oregon Autism Commission, the Foster Commission.
So these uh these are uh commissions that don't have any executive authority. Uh we're currently being uh there there's currently debate about how the Oregon Autism Commission is going to be moving forward. Uh and so that's something that uh I have to keep privy and keep private. Uh but what it does is uh we're basically doing work on the autism stuff. And we're not as much of a scientific commission as some people actually thought. We had a journalist from Britain contact us a while back, uh asking about data and stuff that we just didn't have.
Yeah.
So uh that was unfortunate, uh and we're also under-resourced, understaffed, because we get like fifty thousand a year, that's going up. Uh and uh we we don't get very much, uh it's very hard to be able to collaborate with the Oregon Department of Education. And with other uh departments actually to get information. In fact, a lot of them just don't keep information they should be keeping.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so.
So even if you ask for it, they may not have it.
Yeah, exactly, and that's the frustrating part to me. I'm like, guys, you're a bureaucracy. If what are we paying you for?
Yeah.
So uh I know they're, I know they're overworked, but like we need, we'd be doing more for them in some extent, yes. But we also need to be uh, you know, having them do a lot more work. And uh right now, it feels like Portland treats itself and Oregon treats itself like a part-time state, part-time city. We shouldn't be. We should be working full-time, so, and that's what I'm gonna be doing as uh as a Portland City Councilor.
I've never heard anybody put it that way, but that is what it seems like.
Yeah, it it is, and it's very sad. Uh as someone who is very passionate about uh political engagement, uh I will make sure that I will always be focusing on the work as much as. As long as I'm not experiencing autistic burnout, which does happen, so.
Okay, yeah. Um yeah, and tell me more, as much as you want to get into your Northwest story, you kind of mentioned some aspects of that, but yeah, tell me about.
Yeah, so.
You said Salt Lake City, is that where?
Yeah, uh that's where I was born. My first memories, though, are from San Diego, but apparently also uh was scared of the Hilly Long Bridge as a kid. Which explains now why why I've always known that name but never knew who he was until like a few years ago. Uh but uh yeah, so we moved here once in two thousand eleven. I I went to Robert Gray Middle School. I was kind of bullied. I was very socially awkward. In fact, from I would say about uh uh middle school to high school, I actu- actually to the end of high school, I was really improving my social skills a lot. I would say I was still in my elementary school phase, not like the dumb, not like the dumb uh wacky, you know, kids. But in terms of like social cues and stuff like that, so I it's been really a big journey there. Uh and uh my Northwest story, I went to David Douglas. Uh I uh took a really good, big interest in uh business, uh because I wanted to start a video video game business at the beginning, so, yeah. I'm M Gen Z, so everyone wanted to, so. Uh and uh I actually started one on seventeen, but the publisher, uh there's miscommunication. I told him that I still think it's worth an investment, uh even though it would cost about fifteen thousand dollars, for example. Uh so he said, yeah, and so we left the mi- we left the conversation. I left with him thinking he would invest fifteen thousand dollars into it. He only said that he would invest fifty. And so that.
Fifty dollars, yeah.
Yeah, it's like, what the hell? So that taught me a lot about uh ensuring that you get a lot of people's stuff in either in writing uh and also being very clear. So uh so that's also taught me also a lot about executive stuff, because I was a project manager of that project, and it was going reasonably well. Though I would say the end products, it wouldn't have been good because I was just down, uh because I was just like making everything so low scale, it would have been a boring thing. But like, but the the functions and everything was going well and the process uh until that. That hit a brick wall, so we had to disband the team after that, unfortunately. Uh but I bring that perspective, and I really want a lot of uh business to operate in Portland, Oregon. But regarding my Northwest story, I went to the East, I went to, you know, uh as I said, I went to Robert Gray, went to uh then East Portland. And frankly, a lot of my Northwest stories more internal than can be said in a story, to be honest. So it's not really one that can do is conducive to that. But uh I love Portland. I love how green it is. I want uh it to be very environmentally friendly. I am an environmentalist, but more of a warrior way than uh academic way, so to speak. Uh and I think we also need to really invest in uh actually, uh so I know that bikes and bikers can be annoying, don't get me wrong. But I think if we were to have a bike factory in East Portland, that would actually be a way to uh make things more environmentally friendly without like penalizing people. Uh create jobs, manufacturing, and uh invest in our district and uh have reason to invest in better transportation and transit. So it sort of combines all all three of those things, and that's what the ideas I like to think uh like to uh invest in. As well as local production centers that we contracted out to larger companies uh for dirt cheap. So you still have like those unions, labor, and those people getting paid a lot, but uh those companies uh would basically paying us the same they would be paying normal people. They just won't be paying the taxes here, so that means though that part of that money revenue would go to the city. So it would in help us invest in our uh cities well, without costing taxpayers a dime.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, yeah.
No, that's cool. It's a really cool story. I wasn't, I was curious, like, was there a, because you mentioned earlier, you knew you wanted to be in public service at a young age. Was that like, was there a moment where you're like, I know I want to do this and everything?
Um, no.
It was just always there.
Yeah, it was always there. I wanted to be a soldier, then when I was fifteen or sixteen, I was told I apparently couldn't because of my autism. I've received mixed stuff since then, but uh since then after, I I was always on that path after. Especially after Trump won, he basically blew the idea of who what a politician is and who they can be out of the water. So as much as I despise him as a person, though I will be honest, we someone can work with him, and I think I can because I'm, yes, I'm blunt and honest, but. Uh I'm like Chris Christie, but better in I think how I can work with Trump, because I'm honest. Uh but I am also willing to be civil and respectful, and I think he'll appreciate that. I do think he's a narcissistic narcissist, and I'll tell him that to the to his face. I do think he's done horrible stuff, but I'm also willing to work with him uh to get funds, federal funds, if he wins the election. Though I do, I'm fully on board for Biden-Harris twenty twenty-four. Uh though I I'm a little bit underwhelmed, unfortunately, but still very much support Biden, really like him. Uh I actually supported Yang in twenty twenty partially and then uh and then other candidates, so like, but anyway. Uh moving back, though, uh sorry, can you remind me what?
No, it's all good. I was just saying, like, yeah, what made you kind of decide to get into?
Uh and so that actually, I would say, was probably the moment it was like, okay, yeah, as soon as I graduate, I'm going to be investing in that. Because uh I thought that we need all, we've needed a huge systemic change in the world for a while. And not talking about what progressives ta- talk about when they talk about systemic change, I'm talking about uh a new paradigm, a paradigm shift. A new way, a new Portland, a new world, uh so that's really what I'm focused on. Uh doing it in pragmatic ways and really action-oriented. I like being able to make decisions. Uh I really consider myself a good ju- good at judgment. For example, I was only multiple Democrat to push a resolution uh on on when Shemya Reagan, Shemya Fagan. Uh had to resign to uh really be more critical. Uh I liked Ro- I mean Rosa Colquitt, the chair of the DPO at the time, and I believe she's still chair. A good friend, great person, but I felt like her resolution was just too sympathetic. Like, I get it, she's a working single mother uh who's going through messy divorce, but the here's the thing. Yes, it was legal. She was advised it was ethical, but it was still a poor judgment, and we need to hold people accountable for poor judgment. And some candidates aren't, so uh we need to have people who are also willing to put the public interest above their own interests. Like, I'm going to be renting uh when I'm elected, so I'm so I'm not going to be getting rich off off of this, so.
Yeah.
Uh I hope, yeah, though admittedly, there are contacts that people politicians always make that uh, you know, that hey, that you're able to be like, talk to them then. But that that aside, which is just unfortunate uh nature of relationships, so. That aside, though, uh I really want a lot more accountability, so, and I also had to hold Diego Hernandez accountable. Uh when he was uh abusing uh women in legislature and uh I had a domestic abuse thing. Uh I had personal experience with that. In fact, not only was my mother and I affected that by that, but I had a middle school friend of mine uh in high school. Uh die because her ex-partner or partner at the time, I can't remember the specifics, uh killed her in, I believe, his apartment. That was horrific. Uh nobody deserves that, and we have so much sexual violence here in Oregon. We rank seventh in in uh the nation for highest uh sex trafficking. That's, we need to crack down on that, so. Not in a QAnon way, but there needs to be, uh we need to focus on that because that's horrible for people.
Yeah, and I know in a in a uh the homeless community, women's.
Exactly.
Abuse is a huge.
And just imagine how many autistic people are being abused through that.
Yeah.
Or people just other disabilities. That's horrible, so, and then we also need to create jobs because uh. Um jobs for those people as well, because we need our society uh to be well-income, uh you know, lots of funding. I've already gone over this, but I really want to emphasize jobs here because uh we've been emphasizing the tech industry for so long. That we've neglected other jobs that built this nation, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. Um, okay. Let me get into some of these goofy questions. This one, this might not work, because do you drive? You drive?
Um actually, no, I take public transit, actually, so I actually personally see uh how unsafe it is. Like, I've had people, mentally unwell people, you know, doing that. I understand how frustrating it is, so.
On on public transit?
Yes, yeah, I understand it, and.
It it is quite a, because I I used to ride it downtown. I worked downtown for like ten years and and it used to be a lot better. Does that seem right?
Yeah, yeah, it did, but but now there's so much violence right now, uh and it's just horrible, horrible. And I also uh support, speaking of, I was mem- I'm a member of the Democratic Party's uh Gun Owners Caucus, actually, so.
I didn't even know they had that.
They do, uh so we focus on pragmatic uh legislation uh regarding uh reducing gun deaths, like reducing suicides. We passed a bill to reduce that, so.
I see.
So there's still program Democrats out there who are also willing to work of Democratic Party on gun control, so.
Yeah.
Uh though I'm per- though I'm personally more, uh I support the right to revolution as a concept, but anyway.
Okay, uh well, I was asking that because.
Public safety, though, uh we need to really have a lot more public safety.
Yeah.
Uh we don't have that. We need more transit officers. Uh I've I prefer to focus on the safety aspect than the ticketing side, because frankly, at this point, Tri-Met should just be fully funded.
Yeah.
So like there, at this point, there's no.
They get a lot of federal funding too, but.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like a third of their budget, but I agree with you. It's like they they put all this money into it, but the safety aspect is just not.
Yeah, exactly, so uh we need a lot more safety there because it's harming people and it's making it unsafe to travel in some cases. But I still have to do it because I go to lots of events.
Yeah.
And there's so little transit locations in my area. In fact, I believe uh Burnside, uh the Blue Line, my uh near where I live is right. Like the only place I can think of in my area that has a, I mean, the only place on a hundred on a hundred twenty-second that has a transit. Uh you know, train line, max line, so we are really under medicine. And that was also the murder capital of Portland as well, so I want to uh fight for those people who live near there, so.
Well, I was asking you that because I always ask people this goofy question of, maybe it's, maybe I can ask you, do you ride bike?
Uh I used to, but not right now, but I'm going to be getting back into it.
Let's say you're, let's say you're riding a bike, or if you imagine yourself driving a car, I always ask people, if you see a parking spot, either on a bike or a car, do you pull in or do you back in? Or is it, is it just random?
Uh I I I would say I probably pull in.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Um I.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I pull in uh because I'm always going forward.
Okay, okay, there you go. I like that, yeah. Um which fruit, if you had a piece of fruit, which fruit do you think you could throw the throw the farthest, like on a football field?
Uh I want to say an apple, probably.
Okay.
Yeah, uh I also like apples as well. Uh my house drinks a lot of apple juice, actually, so, yeah. Uh I would throw that uh personally, yeah.
Good choice. Um do you like peanut butter at all? I always ask people, do you like crunchy or smooth peanut butter?
Uh it depends on my mood, actually, uh but peanut butter is good, and it's surprisingly good on a burger, I will admit, like.
I've heard that.
Yeah, I'm I'm surprised about how well it goes with that. I thought it would be horrible, but it actually turned out uh decently good. Uh though it can be like too much, put too much on it, but.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so it it can be too much if you put too much on it, but can also add like a nice little sweet, uh nutty sort of thing to it, so. Yeah, I like peanut butter, uh but I don't eat as much as I uh should. I'm also trying to go on a diet right now to eat more apple, apple slices and peanut butter instead of like, I'm I'm a chips guy through and through, and I love fast food, so. I grew up on that, so, but I need to get.
I do too. I I'm uh, I'm bad with the fast food.
I love my pop, I love my Popeyes, I love Wendy's, so.
Totally, I'm right there with you. Um uh speaking of that stuff, do you have a favorite type of french fry? Do you like?
Oh.
Crinkle cut, regular cut, uh.
I I love uh regular cuts, uh if I had my gold standard, uh there would be a couple of gold standards. Now, for a fast food fry, I love curly fries, but they're not actually my gold standard, uh just because uh that I've never found them really salty enough for me.
Okay.
Uh but I don't want them too salty, so McDonald's is my gold standard of that.
They're kind of the best, right? Like, everyone agrees.
Yeah, I I hate Burger King's, uh Wendy's, yeah, uh remade their fry and somehow made it worse. I mean, it's crispier now, which is cool, but like you took away all the flavor.
Uh I think I remember that when they they're like, we're doing the new fry or whatever.
Yeah, it's just set on a fry, guys.
Yeah.
Uh and uh so, yeah, but I also really do like uh, I like diner fries uh as well, you know, those sort of thick cut ones. Not how Burger King does it, though, and then sometimes they're very crispy, that's really good. But I ate a lot of potatoes growing up, actually. My family ate a lot of southern food and a lot of uh hmm, we're Mexican, but we also had a family Italian recipe as well.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, uh which both my mother and grandmother are different versions of.
Well, let me ask you this, since you say you just ate a lot of potatoes, people, most, everyone who's come on the show agrees with me that tater tots are a type of french fry. But I've talked to people outside of the show who's like, that's not a french fry.
Apparently, uh let's see, so there's Mexi fries as well, the apparently thing. I'm like, guys, I think we're being too harsh on what is and what isn't a french fry. And also, at this point, what's the point of debating it? It's like debating if water is wet.
Yeah, it is kind of a, yeah.
Yeah, it's like.
Like, who cares, right?
Yeah, just fried potatoes, give me any fried potatoes and I'll be happy. Give me a baked potato and I'll be happy. Give me a mashed potato for my KFC, I'll be happy.
I, yeah, I agree with that.
But, yeah, uh we and don't get me started on the sandwich debate or was or cereal being soup. I don't even like.
Oh, yeah, I've heard all that stuff, yeah. Chili, I get into some of chili, if like chili needs beans or whatever and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah. Uh though I do think that we could actually, speaking of uh cereal, I think we could have used some uh, we need more community gardens. We need to make sure they don't sell, you know, they there aren't like just going to be taken over by the drug people. Uh but uh people do drugs and stuff like that, that sounded a little bit too mean. Uh but like, we do need more community gardens. Uh that could also help with inflation as well, uh if we have people also growing their own food. So we also need to make housing affordable too, so that means like more rental assistance and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. Um let's say you're getting ice cream somewhere. Do you go regular cone, waffle cone, cup?
Oh, gotcha. Uh I mean, usually waffle cone is my preference. Uh regular cone uh is tasty in a bland sort of way, uh but the waffle cone is usually my preference. And then I will always go for either rainbow sherbet or a chocolate uh or chocolate peanut butter scoop.
I like that. I like that. I like a sherbet, it's good.
Yeah, sherbet is uh, you can't keep me away from sherbet.
Especially in the summer, it's good.
Oh, yeah, and I get lots of headaches in the summer because I get migraines easily, so. That's one of the things of living with like autism, ADHD and other comorbid stuff, so. Uh in fact, actually, we found my autism because of uh auditory processing issues I had when I was a little child, so that was interesting, so, yeah.
Um do you, maybe you do, I don't know, I always ask, do you keep your butter out or do you keep it in the fridge?
In the fridge.
Okay, okay, I do too.
Yeah, and uh butter uh is really great. Apparently goes good on a pizza too. Didn't even know that.
Oh, yeah, I would try, I'll try that sometime, yeah. Um let's see, you were forced to pick a gigantic brand to run or company. Which co- what brand would you pick?
That's really tough.
Nike or something or?
I mean, I actually know a couple Nike executives, uh like I'm not just Julie by Metaverse, but I met one at an art collective too. Uh who's a nice woman, uh whose wife of the or partner of the art collective person on East Port, in West Portland. But uh I would probably have to say um Chick-fil-A. Because they get the fundamentals right when it comes to the sandwich and everything. Uh but I would also have uh them just add, expand their options just a little bit more, like I don't want them doing everything. Like, get rid of the chicken soup that you guys have, which we're surprised they even have. Put on like, uh be willing to put on a little bit of like uh spicy mayo, but I don't want them to replace a spice meat with spicy mayo. Everyone else has done that, uh you know, uh or the other company I would probably might run uh might be uh Square Enix.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Big fan of the guy, yeah, I mean, that's what got me into realizing uh the dangers of letting big businesses run rampant. And uh it also, I'm, it also, I'm pretty sure also had like a a a pro-union message in there, hidden in there somewhere too, and then pro-environment, so. Which uh but, yeah, anyway.
Those are cool choices. I like.
Yeah, um and then Square Enix right now needs a lot of help anyway, so. Uh or maybe uh one of the game engine companies, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Like uh.
On.
Epic or something.
Yeah, Ep- Epic or Unity, because Unity is go is being horrible right now. Epic is always uh has always been bad, so.
And they're just getting bigger, it seems like.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, I always ask people this, is there, did you have a good meal recently or a business you want to shout out?
Like, oh, yeah. Uh, I mean, I've been to multiple good places recently. Uh, I've went, I've, like, I went to, uh, Van Herbert Brewing. Uh, but the one I really want to shout out, uh, is actually just a small little Chinese place near me because I love Chinese food.
I do, I do too.
Yeah. Uh, I, so it's called, uh, Taipei Noodle House.
Okay.
Yeah, it's ru- it's really, it has really good chi- uh, chicken. I'm not a big fan of spicy, uh, miso soup or whatever. Uh, but a really good chicken and rice, good portions. They need, they deserve a lot more business. And then Chen's, uh, Chinese kitchen as well. So really love those. Uh, and we also just need to also be making things better for a lot of, uh, food carts as well. Uh, food carts are the lifeblood of Portland small business, I think. So.
Totally. Yeah. Um, okay. Uh, I always tell people this before I do the whole donation thing, I'll, I'll give you a donation because anyone who comes on the show, I'll donate to and I, you know, the matching program I think is good, even though it's, it's like the nine times might be too much, but I think it's a good idea.
It only goes up to about a hundred twenty thousand at the, at the very most, or forty thousand for mo- for two hundred fifty dollars. So.
The prob- I think the problem is they're already running out of money for that, but, um, but I'll, I'll give you a donation and anyone who comes on the show will donate. Uh, but where can people go?
Oh, yeah. Salzareforthepeople.com. Uh, it, the for the people part is not a coincidence. I've had like an email, uh, called D and for people. Uh, for, since I was eighteen, since I was nineteen, uh, I also know what it's like to go to job training programs because I went one after graduating high school. So, uh, yeah, one for people with disabilities. So, uh, and from there, I, I, I that confirmed my suspicion that working minimum wage job would be torture for me. So. Yeah, I'm definitely more of an academic. So, uh, that's, but, so yeah, salzareforthepeople.com. And I'm in the process of editing it, uh, a little bit as well, but I just updated it as well a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and you'll see a lot of good policies there. I'm very policy heavy. Uh, that's no coincidence because I'm in here to do things, not just to virtue signal. And, uh, I didn't get to even half of the policies I wanted to on this podcast. So, uh, yeah, I, I should be happy to attend here again as well to get to those. So.
There's a lot of time, you know, until.
And, yeah, and I've also thought about debating someone. So, uh, I know Chris, uh, which I know everyone hates and I get it. Uh, the, the guy needs to be more chill. Uh, I'd be happy to debate Chris, uh, have a friendly debate or uh, debate, uh, someone from another district. I think that'd be cool. Or even Candace Avalos, but I don't think that'll be happen. Uh, I'm, I'm decent friends with Candace, but, uh, uh, I disagree with her on policy. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm always down to do that. And, and I, I did reach out to Chris like a month or two ago and he agreed and then he dis- and then he later changed his mind. So.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But I'm open to have anyone on here and, um, I always tell my guests, like, if you want to do an episode or have an idea for an episode, just, you know, hit me up and I, we can make it happen.
Yeah. And then one thing I also want to do is, uh, one thing I have, I'm actually trying to arrange is a monthly candidate, uh, monthly candidate meeting actually for all the candidates. And for whoever who loses, I sort of want them to form a pack, uh, actually, because uh, a group pack so that we don't put the, their runs to waste, you know?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and I want everyone to be working together with a progressive, moderate, conservative. I'm very consensus oriented, though I am willing to of course take hard stands, uh, like I have on, uh, restricting camping. Like I love those people. I'm not trying to hurt them. Like you'll hear a lot of progressives say a lot of the more moderate conservative candidates or how they define it at the very least.
Right.
Uh, no. So.
Yeah, awesome. Well, yeah, thanks so much for coming today. And like I said, yeah, maybe you can come back and we'll do another one. Yeah.
Yeah, that would sound great. Thank you. Have a great day.